Jeff.
Counselor Sharp.
So I'll just chime in on this one. I think that I agree that if we're, maybe this one we can just defeat. And maybe it'll become a full-time position, but if it's not going to be, then we have to pick and choose which ones. And adding a full-time in September, but if the option is either add full-time or add or don't add at all, then I think I would support not adding it at all.
Counselor Bothwell, if we vote on, depends which way we want to do this. If we vote on the two-year term and it's defeated, then we will vote on September, do another amendment and vote on September 2020. Do you want to do that?
Yeah.
And the mover and seconders okay with that amendment?
I thought the September one was the first.
Yeah, I think that's the first one.
All right, so why don't we leave it and then if this is defeated for the September full-time, then we'll do another motion for September with a two-year term. Okay? And Counselor Vane has called for a recorded vote. Moved by Counselor Frank, seconded by Counselor Sharp. Resolve that Resolution C-20-68 of the Budget Committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 18, 2020 be amended to read. Resolve that the economic development position be hired in September 2020. Counselor Bothwell?
I'm a nay to that.
Nay. Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frank?
I guess I have to say yay, huh?
I have to say yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Can you reread the motion?
Yes, certainly. Moved by Counselor Frank, seconded by Counselor Sharp. Resolve that Resolution Number C-20-68 of the Budget Committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 18, 2020 be amended to read. Resolve that the economic development position be hired in September 2020. Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Barty?
Nay.
And I will vote yay. So that is carried.
So Jeff, just one question.
Sure.
So to that previous, we just carried. Stephen, can you tell me what the, I'm tracking this. Can you tell me what the cost of a September start is? Can you tell me the percent Grimsby and the percent total?
Maybe we can come back to it.
Yeah, cool.
We can let you know.
Thank you.
All right, next we have C-20-70, Parks Specialists. I have a mover here, Counselor Frank. Did we have a seconder? Counselor Dunstall? Moved by Counselor Frank, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that Resolution Number C-20-70 be lifted from the Budget Committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 18, 2020 for separate consideration. All in favor? All right, and that's lifted. Speakers? Yes, Counselor Vane?
Hello, Director Sweeney. For those of you that are not aware, I am the chairperson of the Parks and Rec Committee for the moment, and this is Director Sarah Sweeney. Probably, not to take away from any other member of staff, but I personally have not seen anybody work as hard as I see Sarah work. She is a beacon in the community. She's very well-known. She does a lot of work. Unfortunately, a lot of the work that she does is to compensate for the fact that our population in this town has almost tripled. We have a lot of people that want services. We can't offer the services that everybody wants right now. We just, A, don't have space and don't have the staff. Sarah, Director Sweeney has been asking for help in that department since I've known her several years now. And traditionally in the past, whenever budget discussions came up, the first place the councils would go would be to Parks and Rec and take from that. I'm going to really strongly, strongly ask that council consider these positions, even if we have to start them in September, which I'm not a big fan of. I still hope that we will consider these positions because, like I say, the population's tripled, the staff is not. So please consider that. And Director Sweeney, I would appreciate anything you would like to say on this at this particular moment to, you know, help the council understand a little better what you need these positions for. And COI Schlang, if you have anything afterwards?
Director Sweeney?
No pressure to follow that. This position really is so important. It touches on two of your significant council priorities, one being community amenities, and the other very large one is the environment. We don't currently have the resource on staff. That's has expertise in horticulture, landscape design, and some of that park planning piece. And it is a gap that we have, particularly as we're coming into some new parks still coming onboard, and a lot of parks that need renewal and need redevelopment. And parks has changed over time, too, right? Sometimes you picture parks with just a couple trees, a playground, and grass, but it's much more. They often have trails, they have benches, they need shade for cooling, they need to be accessible now. They should have sustainability built into them, and we should be building them with intentional goals of making them operationally efficient. And we can do that through naturalization and a variety of other things. So there's so much that should go into our park planning as we're doing these park pieces. And this role would be very much doing that. This role would also make sure that right when a site plan comes through, they're immediately putting their eyes on it, and they're looking for opportunities to maximize the investment that we're getting in those spaces for our community members who visit these neighborhood parks hopefully all throughout their entire life. And that person then will follow through that site plan that we envision right through to its completion and into operation and into maintenance. So you really have this continuum that right now we're lacking. Beyond that, also developing better park standards. We want to develop some stronger, consistent standards. This person's going to do all those things. And again, we don't have those as strong as they need to be right now. So the role and investment for this position is huge. We see parks as being a priority, came under priorities through your priority setting, and certainly in our master plan, which again, we did, completed in March of 2019, saw very strongly the importance of our parks and the need for continued investment that this specialist would provide for us.
Thank you. Counselor Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Sarah. You're cringing already. Just curious, is this position going to be specifically dedicated to our priorities that we put together? That's the first question.
I'm tempted to say yes to you, but no. Not solely, but certainly that would be a big part of what they're doing, is really looking at your priorities and looking at the community's priorities. Another big thing that this role would be doing is really getting, doing more in terms of community feedback, as to what do they want to see in their neighborhood parks. So they would be doing all of those pieces. But again, you'd have that consistent set of eyes that's looking at that holistically in the park system and also in our trail system.
As you know or don't know, Counselor Vane is the Chair of Parks and Recs, and I'm the Chair of Finance. So having said that, I will support the other position, but I don't think I want to support this position. As I said earlier in my statement, we do not have to do all of our priorities in year one. We could put some of these priorities, strategic priorities, off to next year or the following year. And this is one that I'm prepared to let go and, but I won't support the Parks Specialist this year. I will support it next year if you want to put it through. But I do believe that this is something we can delay and defer to next year. So that's how I'm going to vote, and that's my opinion. And I think it gives us an opportunity again to knock a few points off the budget. Thank you.
Counselor Cadwell, then Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I see the need in the specialists to this position because, as you mentioned, Sarah, being involved with the development, the planning of, I'm thinking, the waterfront trail that will be continued in the LaSani development, you know, that's something that's very important to be in, to have, I don't know how much staff input was put in with the Brant Haven. And it's great, it's a great trail, but I have an issue with that Brant Haven. There's a public, sorry, accessibility access to that area that I don't think it'll ever be used personally. That's just my own personal opinion, because it's filled up with stone constantly. It's too close to the shoreline and with the high water marks and, you know, climate change. But anyways, I feel it's important because, again, with the expansion and the growth of the new waterfront trail, again, and the fifth-wheel property, and again, parks are, where do people want to go? People want to go to the parks, you know? So to have an expertise to assist staff, to help us to move forward, to, I think this is a very strong priority, so I will be supporting this position.
Counselor Bothwell?
This one tears at me, too, because I really, really strongly support all the work you're doing in Parks and Rec. I know how much these positions are needed and that they will help support the Grimsby Green and all the other active Grimsby and the community in moving forward on your Rec Master Plan on getting those communities lined up, the amenities lined up, and taking care of us. I just would ask, if you had to pick between your Rec Programmer position? It's not fair. So then the next, so I would, I want them both to for you. I just think if there's one that I had to defer, it might, I'm just trying to decide which one would be, to defer it till September. And if this was more of a pressing need now, then I would say Rec Programmer for September. That's all. So I'm just wondering if you can help me with understanding the pressures that you're facing.
That's hard. They're both extremely important, and they function in different, very different areas. I guess if I had to come down and pick one, I would have to lean towards the programmer in terms of urgent need, but, you know, the Parks Specialist really is a gap. It's not just a nice two. You really need these people to have these lens, and you do have some big projects coming up. We have some big ones in our department that really need these attentions put to them. As I said, accessibility standards, we need to make some improvements on that. We're coming into the season to do that. So, you know, I just want to impress that it isn't just a nice two. There's really tremendous value, community gardens. Another thing, as you said, was the waterfront, and really looking at four-season park use as well is another really big thing that this person can get into, is not just having your park be for the warmer seasons, that it's actually a four-season. Lighting in the evenings, all kinds of things. So they're so different, but they're so important. I know you want me to pick one. I just don't know that I can, I'm sorry.
Counselor Sharp?
I just want to reiterate, I said before, and the past council did this, and that is that you put positions in halfway through the year or two-thirds through the year, and what you do is you're putting, you're playing bogey. You're, so you, so say this for number's sake, say a $100,000 position, put 33 grand instead of $100,000 in, next year we got to cover the 77 grand that we didn't pay this year. All right? So next year, it's like, well, why did the base budget go up by so much more? And it's like, oh, well, partly inflation and partly that we only budgeted for half of our staff positions this year. And next year we have to pay them for the whole year. This year we pay them for a part year, next year we pay them for the whole year. And so, and then it's like, oh, well, inflation and like cost of living, whatever, but I don't want to make excuses next year. And what we're doing is we're lining ourselves up for excuses to be made. So I'm also, and I don't want to ask, I'm going to rephrase. If I had to choose one or the other, which one would you rather that I don't not choose?
But if you think it's unfair, I don't want you answering, so.
I, you know, I think at the end of the day, you'll hear the case for both of them and have to decide which you feel aligns more strongly to your priorities, I guess, is what I would say. I have a really hard time choosing one, sorry.
Does anyone else who hasn't spoken on this yet want to speak? Or Counselor Sharp, will you?
Can we join them? Can we, can we, can we give part duties to one and find somebody with both skill sets?
I would say no to that. They're very different skill sets that I would want to keep specifically, very different. I also know that the Recreation Programmer position would be, they're both going to be so busy that I don't think it would be a good service. I think you'd want to differentiate and really hone in on those expertise separately. The Recreation Programmer, you want somebody who has some of the programming background, community development, whereas the Parks Designer, you really want that specialized service. And I, I mean, there's a chance you'd find the unicorn that has both, but even in terms of workload and capacity, it far exceeds the role of one.
Can we train a person?
Counselor Sharp?
So like, what I'm getting at here is that I'm leaning, I'm going to vote no. Then I'm going to nix the Parks Specialist. So like, it's out. So like, I mean, it's not necessarily with a decision of council, but is, maybe there's some possibility, I mean, considering that we don't have a Parks Specialist now, what like we could do, could we train one of our, I don't know, it's just. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Counselor Vane has called the question. Do you want a recorded vote? Moved by Counselor Vane, seconded by Counselor Cadwell. Resolve that Resolution Number C-20-70 of the Budget Committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 18, 2020 remain as recommended. Counselor Bothwell?
I'm always the first to go. I want to see it next year, so I'm sorry, I'm going to have to say nay on this one for this year.
Sorry, Counselor Bothwell?
I said, I will, I'm going to support this next year, but I can't this year, I'm a nay.
All right. Counselor Dunstall?
It's a yay.
Counselor Frank?
Nay.
Counsel, Counselor Cadwell?
Stop it.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Nay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Barty?
With apologies, nay.
And I guess it's up to me. I'll comment a little bit of it, but maybe it's not the right time to comment, but if I'm out of order, so call it. I think because our town and recreation facilities and everything has expanded at such a rate, and the Recreation Strategic Plan was, there were a number of recommendations in that. I think that this is a position that is certainly needed. I've had a number of residents say that our parks are looking tired. This is something where I think we can have money well-spent in our parks to actually improve them and work with them, and to have someone that is actually an expert in the field, rather than have someone trying to do something that's a stretch of their job. I think that this is something that is, can certainly probably save maintenance and probably save a lot of other problems down the road, whether even tree maintenance, to catch something early, to see a bad crotch angle in a branch early, so we can save things and we can, and this is something where we can use it to actually save money over the long term. And there is definitely a need, so if not, I will vote for it. So that is carried. Up next, we have Winter Control. Counselor Dunstall, Counselor Frank? I'll put you on here. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Frank. Resolve that Resolution C-20-73 be lifted from the Budget Committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 18, 2020 for separate consideration. All in favor? That's carried, that's lifted.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to report back on those numbers for the economic development position, moving it to September. So on the town portion of the levy, it's .27. The overall tax bill impact is .08, and it's a total savings of $2.79 on the average home. Mr. Mayor, also, with regard to winter control, I just wanted to bring up that, had a discussion with the Acting Director of Public Works, and we took another look at the winter control increase here, and we feel that we could bring this down from $183,000 down to $130,000. So I will, so that's a drop of $55,000. That would reduce, 25... Just give me one second. It's a decrease in the levy of about half a point, and it's a savings of $4.50 on the levy, $4.50, sorry, on the average home.
All right, thank you for those numbers. We should get a resolution on the floor first, or do we discuss? We'll discuss it first, so. It's been lifted. Counselor Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brendan, you're sitting quietly over there. When I went through it, I was actually going to suggest we take it down to $100,000, but I'm really happy to see that you have been very proactive and have gotten ahead of me. So can we get it down to $100,000? I mean, and obviously you've gone back to this, I'm really, I'm really absolutely thrilled that you've gone back to look at this again. So is there any chance we can squeeze another 30 grand out of that? Or if not, then I'll, I'll take your word for it, and we will just go for $130?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The concern is if, like, we're basing our budget on the actuals, the expenses that we've incurred by plowing the roads, by sanding and salting. So we're basing our current budget based on our actuals from previous years. The concern with artificially lowering our budget is, at the end of the year, we could run a deficit. So we're not guaranteed that we're going to have a bad winter or a good winter. It's always a bit of a hit or miss. But again, based on the climate change and the things, how things are working these days, we're dealing with very moderate temperatures hovering at around zero, which means we end up having to plow the roads, not plow the roads more often, but apply sand and salt to reduce the ice formation. So, which seems, again, with climate change, this seems to be more of a regular occurrence these days. So again, I guess the quick answer is, I don't feel comfortable right now saying we can artificially low it by $30,000 based on what we've seen to date.
Thank you. And to follow up, where did you get the, how did you get it down to $130? What did you take out?
I mean, so what we did is, so we started the budget process back in October, November. So we were working on estimated end-of-year actuals. So what we did was when we looked at, in the last week or so, we got the year-end actuals for actual actuals, not estimated actuals. So we're, yes, so we're more accurate.
I'll help you, help you along. Okay. So with, again, it's like the legal fees, I guess it's, you can't predict the environment. The way things are going these days, maybe in four or five years from now, we won't be getting any snow. Anyway, so with the new move towards using salt over sand, is that part of your, is that part of your reduction as well?
Again, we don't have a handle on that yet. We'll have to see how the winter goes, and we will provide a report to council later once the actuals, so again, we're dealing with 2019 year-end plus the winter that goes into 2020. So once this winter completes, we'll have a better picture of what the total impact is. But again, yes, we're estimating based on our best knowledge in preparing the budget.
Thanks, Brendan. Thanks for doing a great job. Thanks for being proactive. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Sharp?
Stephen, could you tell me what the effect on the percent Grimsby and the percent total would be if we reduce it by 30,000? By 53,000, sorry?
Levy, by about, let's see, roughly half a point. We can get you the exact numbers, I'm just, I'm giving you estimates here. Half a point on the town levy with a decrease in the average residential home from, of about $4.50. Sorry? The tax bill impact? Oh. .42. Overall? .11. Tax bill impact? Yeah, decrease. Yep. 1 point, what was it? You said it was .42, so 1.04?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll move the resolution. Moved by Counselor Frank, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that Resolution C-20-73 of the Budget Committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 18, 2020 be amended to read. Resolve that winter control be reduced to $130,000 for the 2020 budget be approved. Recorded vote? Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frank?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Barty?
Yay.
And myself, I'm a yay. And myself, I'm a yay, so that is unanimous. That's been carried. Up next, we have the Grimsby Beach Study, number C twenty seventy-four. Moved by Counselor Vane, seconded by Counselor, who wants to second it? Frake? Resolve that Resolution number C twenty dash seventy-four be lifted from Budget Committee of the whole meeting minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty for separate consideration. All in favor? That's carried, so that's lifted. Speakers? Counselor Vane?
The, as I stated earlier, of all the emails and messages I've gotten this week, ninety percent have said, get rid of the studies. Even had former council members saying that we've studied this stuff to death. There's not a lot of appetite for this, these studies. So that's the only reason I brought it forward. I'll leave it up to council, your discretion.
Any further discussion? Counselor Bothwell?
It's not just a study. What's happening is the pressures on our cultural landscape in the Grimsby Beach are threatened. We're facing significant change to something that is enshrined in our official plan as of significant cultural value. The official plan actually talks in a number of places to protecting it, and as a priority, it has its own section. So what's happened is, in two thousand and fifteen, there was a cultural heritage landscape done for it, but it was never acted upon. And since then, there's been numerous consultations with the community as to how to help them to work at preserving the unique nature and landscape within that community. This is moving that forward, and it's supported strongly by the community as well as by planning staff. An interim control bylaw was put in place, and a requirement of the interim control bylaw is that the study, land use planning study be undertaken. It's going to combine land use planning, but also the cultural heritage landscape, and the protections that we need to put in place for that. It is a requirement of that bylaw we passed for the interim control bylaw. So I think if we didn't pursue this, we would be in violation of that, and we would have a bit of a problem from the Planning Act perspective legally as well. And, you know, maybe the Director of Planning can speak to that here. I could quote all kinds of things out of the official plan, out of our strategic priorities, out of, we clearly say, we have to protect Grimsby Beach. If we don't do this, we're not following through on what our own official plan says and our own priorities are. So I can't see how, to me, this is just one of those, you, you just, you can't walk away from.
Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know since, well, when we campaigned, or most of us campaigned, we campaigned to protect the Grimsby Beach area, and we debated it, and for the most part, around this council table, we defended it and agreed to do that. And this, for this past year, we've had to defend many infractions of things that were happening in the beach area. So for us now to think we want to backtrack on that, I think is, is, is foolish, and I think it's, it's unfair to the residents that live there, and the town, and our culture, and our heritage, and everything else. We know, there's names of, names of developers that I can't mention here, but we know we've stood in closed session and defended some of those things. So, and we ask our legal guys to go off and defend it for us with, from a legal perspective. So I think that we need to uphold this one, and I think, I will vote for it, I one hundred percent agree with it. And hopefully, we will get enough votes to get it through. Anyway, and I know that we have, my fellow counselor, Kevin Ritchie, is, I'm sure he's on the same page as me, so I will definitely vote a yay for this.
Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, it's not just a study like a cultural study, it's, it's the, what do we call it again? Let's, can, what did we call, this is... No, it's not a cultural heritage landscape. This, this particular study is, it's a land use study. What did we call it?
That's, that's correct. It's a land use planning study.
It's a land use planning study.
So we're not just looking at the heritage we're looking at.
I, I call it anomaly, I guess, because we have, we have, what we, they call them tent lots. So we've got buildings that are on, sitting on two or three lots, and if somebody were to tear it down, they could build two or three houses on it, we'd have all kinds of issues. And this is what we need to do, I think. We need to put it to rest so that people know that their homes are not going to be invaded by people wanting to build bigger homes on these properties. And I think it'll resolve it.
Does anyone else want to speak a first time? Counselor Vane wants to speak a second time? Counselor Vane?
It's more of a question. The, if this is already in the official plan, I don't know why we're spending another hundred thousand, but I'm going to ask the Acting Director of Planning. The, do your staff have the time to do this study this year? And considering, considering there's a second study coming up, as you know, as well?
We're currently in the process of preparing a terms of reference to hire a consultant to do a study. So the staff would be facilitating the consultant's work. So staff wouldn't necessarily be doing the work, it would be mainly the consultants that would be doing the work.
Is a hundred thousand dollars going to be enough? Because my understanding is these types of studies can be very expensive.
That's something that we'll find out when, when we put it out there for, to the consultants. We'll get bids in, and then we'll put it forward to, to council to make a determination at that time.
Counselor Bothwell?
Can you, I'm sorry, Mr. Basic, could, sorry, could you just confirm that, since we have the interim control bylaw in place, that this, Grimsby Beach study is a requirement of that?
That's correct. If, if the town cancels the proceeding with the study, then the town would have to withdraw the interim control bylaw.
Seeing no further questions, I, I will weigh in on this one. I campaigned on heritage, and I campaigned on the uniqueness of our town. This is, this is a site plan, or a, a plan that dates back to eighteen seventy-five, when it was the campground and tent lots, when we actually had ferry, daily ferry service in the summer from Toronto. It's something that's unique. There's very few surviving cottage-type communities in Ontario that are left, and this is very significant. We've worked halfway through this by getting the interim control bylaw in, and, yeah, we could save a hundred thousand dollars and throw it away, and our culture and heritage at Grimsby Beach will be potentially lost forever. And this is something I'm not going to, I think this is something I will certainly support, and I will call for a recorded vote, and it's near and dear to me because it's irreplaceable. So with that, I've called for a recorded vote. Counselor, I'll read the resolution and then call for the vote. Moved by Counselor Vane, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that Resolution C twenty dash seventy-four of the Budget Committee of the whole meeting minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty remain as recommended. And it's a recorded vote. Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Definitely yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp? Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
And myself, a yay, so that has carried. Up next, we have C twenty dash seventy-six, fire transfer to reserves. Moved by Counselor, this is just to lift it. Moved by Counselor Frake, do we have a seconder? Counselor Cadwell? Moved by Counselor Frake, seconded by Counselor Cadwell. Resolve that Resolution number C twenty dash seventy-six be lifted from the Budget Committee of the whole meeting minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty for separate consideration. In favor? That's carried. Counselor Frake?
Chief Bill Thompson. And Stephen, or Harry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the subject of fire transfer to reserves, right now, it's, we're asking for thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. How's our, how's our reserve situation with the Fire Department right now? I mean, is this something we need to do this year, or can we delay it to next year? I mean, that's the first question.
Through you, Your Mayor. I financially believe this is something you have to do every year. Capital assets, this is our management for self-sustaining, for the future. And delaying anything delays moving forward in the future. Next year, we're going to see a dip in one of our fleet. One of our bigger trucks is coming up, the aerial truck. So we're looking at further shared services with other communities, we're going to be exploring opportunities with them. But if we don't continue putting away reserves for future equipment, especially with some of our equipment that is getting older and the technology that's changing out there, we're going to fall behind.
How, how's our reserve situation right now? Will this bring us up to par? I mean, will this bring us up to where we need to be in reserves in the Fire Department? Stephen?
It doesn't bring us up to, actually, to where we should be. We're still, our reserves are still short on, especially for fleet and for equipment as well.
Thank you, I'll leave it at that. Turn it over to Cadwell.
Counselor Bothwell?
Maybe the chief can, Acting Chief can help me understand. I'm looking at the equipment replacement reserve fire fleet, and in, the balance in December two thousand and seventeen was five forty-nine, five eighty-seven, and then it jumped December two thousand and eighteen to eight twenty-one, seven twenty-two, about three hundred thousand. And it's gone up again, December two thousand and nineteen, the balance now was nine fifty-six, three eighty-four, went up about another hundred and thirty thousand. So there was a significant jump between two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen, and then another hundred and something. Is this something that we could say that we have a bit of leeway with because of the reserves have been added? It looks like it, back in two thousand and fifteen, it was nine thirty-seven, it jumped up to one point one million, and then now we're back close to that at nine fifty-six. So I just wondered how far off we are from where we need to be.
Through you, Mayor. As Stephen had said, we, we are far off. We're approaching the largest truck in our fleet, that is twenty years old, and that has a great effect on our fire insurance ratings. The trucks and pumppers are underwrite, underwritten by the fire insurance industry, and they go through an adjuster to the fire underwriters' insurance survey. They get all their information from them, and they rate our trucks, and first-run pumps, second-run trucks and everything. After twenty years, your pumps can be downgraded. Thank goodness, we do all our maintenance and records on it, but we're at a twenty-year lifespan of our aerial now, and that is quite far out. They don't even have replacement parts for some of it now. I'm looking down the road at a new aerial truck in Lincoln, it's only four, five years old. Took them six months to find a part. It's something in fire. I don't understand it, the industry, how it works, it's very unusual, but they, they really hit you hard. And a newer, new ladder truck is not going to be cheap, it's going to be expensive, and that's where we're going to see the dip. So the way we, the way we are, the fireworks, is we depreciate our trucks over twenty years, small fleet over ten years. So we add them all up, and that's how we come out to where our budget should be. Then we'll go out and buy a few vehicles, that's why you see the dip, then you see it, we'll build it back up again when we build it back into that plant. So that's where you're seeing that dips and rise.
Thank you. Counselor Ritchie, then Counselor Cadwell?
Thank you, through the Mayor. So I just wanted to touch on a point on the fire insurance underwriters. So if they were to downgrade us, basically, there's different classes, so they would lower our class, which then every resident in the town would pay more for actual insurance. Is this correct?
Through you, Mayor, that's absolutely correct.
And I'm just curious about a new aerial device. I don't know what size you're looking at, but if you're to do the average a hundred-foot aerial device, is the, a new price for an aerial device around one point seven million dollars?
Through you, Mayor, that's absolutely correct, too.
Thank you. Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Through you, to, to the chief. Just looking at the, the, everything that's in here in the graph and everything like that, in the, in the pie chart, does the Fire Department, again, when we have development, obviously, more people are moving to the area, which actually adds maybe potential, you know, call volume increase, potential, you know, chance of more, more calls. Are, are you, from the Fire Department, can you use development charges at all, Chief? Or is it just, again, I'm just curious on that, do we, are we able to do that, or is it from a, just a reserve, building reserve standpoint? Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. I'll have Stephen jump in on this, as it's newer to me myself, but we were working with Watson and Watson, there is development charges for certain aspects, definitely in the fire service?
Yes, we can use development charges for fire equipment, fire facilities, only if it's related to growth. So it's the growth in the community, the added number of residents in the community that allows us then to collect development charges and help absorb, help offset some of the cost of the, of that equipment.
Yeah, thank you, if I may, Mayor Jordan. I think that's just the importance of keeping your reserves stable and in good shape, too. So thank, thank you for that clarification.
Seeing no, oh, Counselor Dunstall?
Yeah, Chief, if you could just talk a little bit about the staffing day crew, that's something you've tried already, and we're continuing?
I think that that's not, that's not being talked about right now.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That, that one hasn't been lifted. You have to hold your horses on that one, Counselor Dunstall. We just need a mover and seconder for this, if there's no further discussion. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. I guess we may as well have a recorded vote, I'll call for that. Resolve that Resolution C twenty dash seventy-six of the Budget Committee of the whole meeting minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty remain as recommended. Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
I'll go yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Nay.
And I will vote yay, because I really value our, our volunteer fire department, and, and I, I really think that reserves are important, and we need to plan for the future, as the chief said. So that is carried. Counselor Vardy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, I too value the Fire Department. I, I was just thinking that maybe we could just delay a year, because this year's so tight. So I just wanted to make that, that statement, nothing personal, okay? All right.
Counselor Vardy, I think I didn't mean it that you didn't. I think, I, I, I think, I think that, that this is one thing the whole horseshoe can agree on, that they're vulnerable. I think that, that this is one thing the whole horseshoe can agree on, that their volunteer fire department is second to none, and I'll just leave it at that. This is just a resolution to extend our council meeting time to go past the eleven o'clock. Need a mover and a seconder? Councillor Vane and Councillor Cadwell? Moved by councillor Vane, seconded by councillor Cadwell, resolve that council waive the rules of procedure to go past the eleven P M. curfew. All in favor? That's carried. Now, councillor Dunstall, we have a motion to be lifted on the day crew. Would you like to move it? All right. And a seconder? Moved by councillor Dunstall, seconded by councillor Frake. Resolve that the resolution number C twenty dash seventy-seven be lifted from the Budget Committee of the whole, meeting minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, for separate consideration. All in favor? That's carried.
Thank you, your worship. Maybe I could turn to our acting chief, Bill Thompson, and explain what's been happening with this day crew, and this is additional money on top of what you've already been getting?
Yes, through you, worship. Councillor, this was a program that was brought in just over a year ago, and we've mirrored what Lincoln has been doing. There has been some trouble in town, as the taxpayers, citizens aren't aware of, the firefighters that respond to your houses or to your businesses are volunteers. They wear a pager, they come out, they get on the trucks and they go. So they, they're very committed and dedicated and well-trained, very well-trained. And I congratulate council on behalf of that, but what we're finding is in the summer months, we do have troubles. They're young families, they have lives, they have things to do. So we've been staffing the fire hall during the day, and at the same time, we're requested by council, can we see what our deployment times are like? Deployment means leaving the hall with a fire truck and going to an area of response. So we were trying to see how long it gets to the West End or to other areas, and as you can see, our times dropped drastically. It's like having a career department in the fire hall. And a couple of councillors, they're well aware of that, you, you're at the hall, you get dressed and you go, instead of that, getting up, getting in your car, driving to the fire hall. So graciously, last year, council approved it, we trialed it, it went very well. Besides just the deployment time, the, the man-hours, I'll call it, that we were able to accomplish in public education, door-to-door, maintenance, that other firefighters didn't have to come in and do and take away from their families, the pre-planning of the West End, all those new buildings, firefighters have been in them, we've been pre-planning, and we have documents ready, if something does happen there, we just don't go in blind. So it's, it's really worked well, and this is, again, this is a great, great asset to the town at this point in time, and I think it's very, very valued. And this year, we have eleven new crews on, and to layer up to snuff, basically, up to par, this is very needed this summer.
Thank you, chief.
Councillor Vane?
Correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but I believe last year, somebody told me that the response time without this crew was upwards of eleven or twelve minutes, is that correct?
Through you, your worship. Councillor, that would depend. For the West End, that's part of the study, yes, you are correct. For our urban area, which is, we're so tight downtown in that, I'll be honest, our response time's fabulous, we're still seven, under seven, eight minutes, we're very good.
The, I, I did a, read an article many years ago that said, if you live above the sixth floor in a building and you have a heart attack, in Toronto, which has a three-minute response time, I believe, correct me if I'm, I've got enough firefighters here, you can tell me, but, like, even five minutes, which I think is fantastic for a volunteer fire department to have you out there in five minutes, I, I think that this is very necessary. I think we're putting lives in danger if we don't approve this again, and every year. I would like to see this permanently put in the budget.
Councillor Frake?
Fire chief, how are you? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said currently, we're, our, our efficiency is pretty, but it's above standard, it's above, it's actually very good, I believe, in comparison to other fire departments, is that right?
Through you, your worship. Our volunteer service and our commitment and dedication, yes.
In this case, the fifty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-five, where will that, can we exactly where that will go, and what it'll help us do, I mean, in terms of efficiencies in the fire department?
So, what it's going to allow is to ensure that we do have the available firefighters during the summer months, while we're training these other new eleven recruits to get us to our full complement. As you know, summer's a busy time, and we do have young families, but what it also allows us to do is a lot of public education. We're out in the community, we're knocking doors, on the doors, ensuring the community's safe, and I'm, I'm very happy to say, last year, we were able to see Grimsby, we had an eighty percent rate of smoke alarms in homes. That is unheard of. That is unheard of, and I know, I see a shaking of head of a few councillors, they know what it's like. That's just the tip of the iceberg, the pre-planning, the maintenance, everything they're doing is stopping other firefighters from coming in and doing the jobs, taking away from their time and their families. These people are already organized and dedicated to the day crew, and it works well for us.
I hate to ask the question, but of course I have to. Any wiggle room in there at all? I mean, is, can we, if we cut that back by half, could you still have as an efficient service as you have now, or would that really restrict you, or would that really give us, bring our, our numbers down in terms of firefighting and fire service and efficiencies and so on and so forth?
Through you, your worship, that's a, that's a tough one to answer, and, you know, I'm hearing the public safety out here, and how committed you are to our volunteers, I, I'm going to stick solid on this one now, sir.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, just like to comment on that, too, and I think it's a great program, especially from the education side. As the chief mentioned, the smoke, smoke detector, I'll call it the rate, is fantastic. And also, the other thing, getting staff out to the, out to visit the homes, important thing that people in, in, from a fire prevention aspect, is families planning your escape. And I remember the old days, you know, you, you talk to the, you talk to the families and make sure that, it's so important that the families, they have, they can plan, they know how to plan their escape, so the kids know where to go, if, if for any reason there was a, you know, there was a, a fire, or, you know, yeah, but, I, again, looking at your budget, too, chief, I know it, it's basically pretty much based on, on man-hours, for staffing to, to provide that service, so, yeah, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that, that amount you're budgeting, so, thank you.
Councillor Bothwell?
How many weeks does that cover?
Last year, that covered approximately fourteen weeks, and this year, we're looking at changing our, through our data and our analysis and working with the firefighters, we're actually looking, instead of six-hour days, we're looking at twelve-hour days, splitting them into two shifts. They're dedicating to six hours, so we're looking at our lean times, six A M. till noon, then noon till six.
Thank you. Councillor Ritchie?
Thank you, through the mayor. So what I remember of this, of last year, was that the West End response time, especially in the summer months with increased traffic, and having to wait for staff to arrive on scene was in excess of eleven months, or eleven minutes, is that correct?
Through you, mayor, that, sorry, sir, that's incorrect. The deployment time was still probably around five to six minutes, it was the travel time, and then the overall response time was twelve minutes to the West End.
Sorry, so my apologies, yeah, the overall response time was eleven, twelve minutes. So with that, again, one of the things that, that I'm aware of is we try to follow certain standards in the fire service. So there's a volunteer standard, that you have so many crew, or so many personnel getting to the scene in a certain amount of time, and the twelve minutes is a decre, a decrease level in service according to this standard. I believe it's ten twenty-one, but I could be wrong.
Through you, mayor, that's, sorry, that's deployment of volunteer firefighters is seventeen twenty, and, sorry, sorry to say it, but it's seventeen twenty, and we do have a standard that was adopted by council, and that was it, and it is nine minutes ninety percent of the time.
So again, so, one of the, the points that I wanted to just make out is that with us being notified of the twelve-minute response time in the summertime months, it would be a decrease in service, which then could affect our underwriters' insurance, which then could affect insurance rates for the residents. I think this is, especially with the tough months in the summertime, having the personnel in order to maintain that standard, I'm very comfortable with this.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yeah, thanks, mayor, and I'll be real quick. Again, with this program, especially this year, with that new water main construction that's going on along Clark Street, along the service road, I believe, to Baker Road, and I think till about November, Brandon, is the timeframe roughly, it's going to be pretty much through the summer and into the fall, so, again, that, that can affect response times both ways, from, you know, your, 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 your volunteers getting to the hall, and plus you guys, so, I think it's great. Thank you, I'll stop.
All right, seeing no further questions?
Recorded vote?
Yep, recorded vote. I'll scratch my name off, and I'll put yours, councillor Frake. Moved by councillor Vane, seconded by councillor Cadwell, resolve that resolution number C twenty dash seventy-seven of the Budget Committee of the whole, meeting minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, remain as recommended. Councillor Bothwell?
I say we start with Zed next time and go to B, so like, we have, like, a little alternate, I'm a yay. Thank you.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yay.
Councillor Frake?
Yay.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yay.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yay.
Councillor Sharp?
Yay.
Councillor Vane?
Yay.
Councillor Vardy?
Yay.
And myself, I'm a yay, and I just want to, again, commend the volunteer fire service. If we went to full-time, that's where we'd see probably a three to four million dollar increase per year. So, we're going to keep our volunteers, and, and I feel strongly that they serve us very well, they serve us as well as, as a full-time complement. I, I think statistics will prove that. Thank you.
Maybe we can make a council calendar.
Up next, we have resolution C twenty dash seventy-eight, recreational programmer. To lift it, it's moved by councillor Dunstall, seconded by councillor Sharp. Resolve that resolution number C twenty dash seventy-eight be lifted from the Budget Committee of the whole, meeting minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, for separate consideration. All in favor? That's carried. All right, councillor Dunstall, would you like to speak on that?
Yeah, I'd really like, if Sarah, Sarah could give us an up, an idea what this recreation programmer will be responsible for, because we have all these wonderful programs already, and I know you do a great job with everything you do, in fact, even with the, I've got to tell everybody, with the teacher's strike, this lady puts on camps, you have an employee that goes and works for her, when the- With the teacher's strike. They put day camps on for the kids, because the teachers are on strike, and I, I want to commend you for doing that, that little extra, that people don't have any idea you're doing, good for you. So that's part of programming, so tell us what this person's going to do for us.
I must first give the credit to our recreation coordinator, Trevor, because he does that just kind of on the fly, because that's the way we roll sometimes. So a couple of things I just want to touch on. When we did the master plan, I looked back on when our last master plan was for Parks Recreation and Culture, and it was done in nineteen ninety, so again, kudos to all of you for approving that, because it was a big milestone just to move forward. In that nineteen ninety master plan, it recommended that we look at a second recreation person. That was thirty years ago, thirty years ago. If you think about the population change, the types of programming changes, we've continued to do that with really just one dedicated recreation person, and as someone who did it for a long time, I can tell you, it's just not possible to do it with one person. Trevor does an amazing job, our department works so hard, but it's just not possible to keep up, let alone to really move into where we need to be, and we do need to grow as our population is growing. In terms of comparators in other municipalities, other like municipalities of size and similar types of service levels, see probably between three and five recreation staff, and again, we have one. And if that one person goes on vacation for two weeks, then they have me, and it's very, very hard to keep up with us. As time's gone on, too, recreation's changed, there's a lot more requirements in terms of the safety and supervision measures that we provide for children, inclusion measures, diversity measures, all of those types of things make not only continuing to do this current job we're doing difficult, but it actually takes more time, because we're trying to do all of those pieces as well. As our demographics change as well, the, the aging population, our active ages, as we would call them, they're looking for more opportunities, too, that demographic has grown, and we're definitely not providing the amount of resource we want to them, youth populations, I could go on and on and on. This position is also a real building block for the community, this position needs to do a lot of community development, and so working with our sports organizations, special events that want to come in, to really help them build their program as well. So the number of tasks this person is doing is huge, it's not just programming, it is the community development. All of our facility allocation is being done by this person. All of the awareness and marketing and promotions for all of the programs and activities we have is all being done by one person, and it's just, we're at a point that we're not able to maintain what we're doing, let alone move into where we know we need to be today. Does that help?
Thank you, Sarah. Councillor Frake?
I'm good on this one, Sarah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to commend you, I mean, you, you work very, very hard, and so do your staff, I mean, wherever I go in this town, wherever anyone goes in this town, they will see you, you're working twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, on weekends, you see you at the Pete King Center, we see you downtown, we see you everywhere. There's not a place you don't touch, and I wish I could have, would like to have said yes to your first position, but I certainly will support this one, and thank you for all your hard work, and I know you will do a great job this year with this new person.
Councillor Sharp?
So, thank you, Mayor Jordan. So this is a position I was going to vote for, but I'm still going to vote for it, because, so I have kids, I have a three-year-old, I have a one-year-old, we have a baby on the way in August, and, so, yeah, thank you, but, so we, like, use these services, and then my mother-in-law plays pickleball, and, and like, we, so we want to continue, they, it's not just kids that use these services, and, and I don't want to, I don't want to take away from, from what services we have and what services we can offer to the community.
Thank you, councillor Sharp, I didn't realize you were finished. Any further questions? Seeing none, moved by councillor Dunstall.
Recording vote?
Councillor Frake calls for a recorded vote. Moved by councillor Dunstall, seconded by councillor Frake. Resolve that resolution number C twenty dash seventy-eight of the Budget Committee of the whole, meeting minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, remain as recommended. Councillor Bothwell?
Yay.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yay.
Councillor Frake?
Yay.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yay.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yay.
Councillor Sharp?
Yay.
Councillor Vane?
Definitely yay.
Councillor Vardy?
If you can make Southwood Park profitable, yay.
And I myself am a yay, and Sarah, I really, I'm proud of what you do. And I myself am a yea. And Sarah, I really, I'm proud of what you do and the extra effort you put in. And thirty years is a long time, and we're a lot different town now. That is carried. Up next, we have C-20-80, the wayfinding study. To lift it, moved by Counsel Frick, second by Counsel Cadwell. Resolve that Resolution C-20-80 be lifted from the Budget Committee of the Hall, meeting minutes of February 18, 2020, for separate consideration. All in favor? So that is lifted. Discussion. Counsel Frick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is Sarah back up again? Sarah, this is a, this is a wayfinding study, is that right? This is not, does not include signs. This is just a wayfinding study. So the signs would be something extra.
That's correct. It would just be the study to determine a standard and a brand that we would use, and then the signs would come later on.
Is this something we can put off to next year? I mean, it's, we've lived without this now for a number of years. And I, I don't look for signs when I go into most municipalities or towns. Maybe other people do. And I don't know how important this is to the town, but it's one of the items which I have on my list that I'd like to defer. It's not big, however, but something I think that we can afford to lose this year. Anyways, I'm not going to support this one this time around, but I'll leave it for someone else to speak to it as well. Thank you.
Counsel Vane?
The, I respectfully disagree with my peer Counsel Frick. The, I think everything that we put off, either it's not, we're going to make it here again, because I don't know if council will support another increase next year. Also, the costs will go up, and the cost of this is, I think, like thirteen thousand dollars. And it's such a huge thing for, we're talking about putting machinery in the welcome center to have people go around, and we're trying to promote tourism here. And I know the DIA, and correct me if I'm wrong, Counsel Frick, but I think the DIA supports this. I could, am I wrong in that? I think they do. Oh, okay. I was under the impression the DIA did support this, but I think it's something we need to move on with. I mean, the region's talked about it. We've talked about it. Let's just do it and move on and get some more tourism in this town.
Counsel Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Through you to Sarah. Just looking at our reserves fund balance here, and I just, and it is a study, excuse me, as you've mentioned, Sarah. Pardon me. We have the DIA capital projects reserve at twenty-four thousand and seven-hundred-and-seventy. Could that money come out of the, is there a possibility that money could be coming out of the capital projects reserve? I don't know what's on, Stephen jumped up, maybe he can help me out. Because I know it was increased, it was from 2018 to 2019, it was increased by eleven thousand dollars anyways. Yeah, is there, is there an option or a possibility there, Stephen? Thank you.
Now, that would have to be approved by the DIA board to take the money from the reserves.
Is Counsel Bothwell?
Struggling with this one. I know it's been bounced back and forth for a number of years. I, and I understand it is just the study. I just would like to think that we've exhausted all other area, all other ways of trying to find funding for this, like through, if there was any, there's grants and things like that that are out there. For this small an amount, there should be an opportunity to find some provincial or federal funding to help with, with, through the tourism, through a tourism or through some type of a government outreach program. That's all. I'm just hoping there's another way to try to fill this gap.
Sarah?
And certainly, if an opportunity came along, we would do our very best to take it. One of the reasons that this came up is, again, through the master plan, it actually came up a number of times that people didn't know where our parks were, which was a bit of a surprise, maybe not entirely when you think back to it. But some of our facilities aren't that well-signed. I know some of our culture facilities would echo the same. Our chief librarian is here. And it is actually more of an issue than sometimes you realize, and we know we need to move on it. So the intention of doing this study now was to, as we're doing some more park signage, which we need to put in place, to create more of a consistent look and theme, so that we're improving that, so people know where their parks are. Another gap that we have is a lot of our parks don't have an address on them or the nearest cross-section. So if you're in a park and you have an emergency, there is no address on there. So we're trying to move in that direction and use that study so that as we're replacing signs or creating new signs, we have a bit of a vision and a sort of streamlined strategy as to what they're going to look like. That's sort of the focus of where we're trying to go with this.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else want to comment a first time? Counsel Ritchie?
Thank you to the mayor. So one of the committees that I sit on is Act of Grimsby, and this wayfinding's been talked about multiple, multiple times with, with very strong support. You know, whether it's signs for Town Hall, Peach King Center, and those signs don't have to be just out front here. Those signs could be the other end of town, saying three kilometers this way to Town Hall or so forth. But they've all agreed that they think that this is a fantastic way of not just promoting our town to outside individuals coming to visit, but also to promote our town, per se, for even parks, to our own residents, because they're not aware of where everything may be. And there's, like I said, and there's a lot of support for that, and I think this, this study is, it's a small ask, but it's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, before people go a second time, I will chime in on this one. Certainly, at the regional level, it was deferred this year, the wayfinding study and, and program. And I'm thinking, I see that we have a need. Do we have a need to study a need? Could we, even maybe in-house? I guess Trevor will have a little bit more time now. Possibly in-house, could we look at something to maybe get the basis? And I don't know what we'd get for sixteen thousand in study, but I'd quite rather spend it on signs if we were going to do something like that. So maybe we can look at moving forward on putting something together in-house and see if we can, can approve this possibly at a later date. So I'm not prepared to support it now. Counsel Frick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I have Stephen up at the podium there for a sec? Stephen, are there any loose money hanging around in some funds that we, that you're hiding from us, that's in Little Peaky Bank? I believe there are some. I won't say where they are, but you probably know where they are, that we can help, that we can use to help with this particular small project? That's a, that's a yes, right?
For that amount of money, yeah, there is, honestly.
I mean, I know of one fund, I know of one line item, one fund where we can pull some money out. And that's the dividend, not dividend, but the stipend fund. Is that a place we can get this money?
You could, actually, if council agreed to it, yes.
I mean, I don't, I think everyone on this council table seems to be very hip on this particular item, so I don't think that's going to be a big issue. But I think that's one place we can get that money. And I'd like to say, like the mayor said, make sure there's signs included in there, not just a study. Maybe we might have to do some of the work ourselves. But if we can pull some money out of that fund, which is sitting there waiting for some, for a rainy day, I think that's a good place to get it. Thank you.
Counsel Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I find that intriguing, that, you know, obviously looking for, through reserves. Just on the top here, working fund, would that, we have working funds at seven hundred thousand dollars. Is that something that could be addressed to, possibly, Stephen?
Those funds are encumbered. They're, they're set aside for another use. Yeah.
Counsel Vardy?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to know, are there going to be any kind of collateral funding opportunities with the upcoming Canada Games that might be able to help us promote our communities as a part of that?
Thank you. Counsel Vane, our representative, do you have anything that you know about that?
Actually, when Counsel Vardy said it, I just remembered when we were at one of the functions, there was a gentleman that I met who, I'm going to give him a call tomorrow now that you've said that, and I've just got to find his card again. But there, this gentleman was, he was some kind of a money man. Wasn't he the gentleman we met on the bus? He was from Toronto for the 2021 Games.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I'll see if I can find his card and actually reach out to him. Good suggestion. I will, I'll try and find it tomorrow and call him tomorrow.
What I think we'll do, because it seems to be a consensus at the council table, if we refer this back to staff, so it's not a budget implication for this year, how does, all right, well, we'll vote on that anyway. Moved by Counsel Vane, second by Counsel Cadwell, resolve that Resolution Number C-20-80 of the Budget Committee of the Hall, meeting minutes of February 18, 2020. Resolve that the wayfinding study be referred back to staff for further consideration. Recorded vote by Bothwell? Counsel Bothwell?
So it's referred back to staff, right? That's the motion?
Yes.
I'm a yea.
Counsel Dunstall?
Yea.
Counsel Frick?
Yea.
Counsel Cadwell?
Yea.
Counsel Ritchie?
Yea.
Counsel Sharp?
Yea.
Counsel Vane?
Yea.
Counsel Vardy?
Yea.
And I myself am a yea, so that has carried.
Mr. Mayor, we'll come back with some, with some varying options on then, how that can be funded.
Great, thank you very much, Stephen. Up next, we have C-20-85, council facility upgrades. Have a motion to lift, moved by Counsel Frick, second by Counsel Sharp, resolve that Resolution Number C-20-85 be lifted from the Budget Committee of the Hall, meeting minutes of February 18, 2020, for separate consideration. All in favor to lift? That's carried. Counsel Frick, you'd like to speak on that?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Being that we're not going to give up twenty percent of our salaries, maybe we can give this one up. Thirty, the thirty-five thousand eight hundred, Stephen, this is really for what? This is for chairs and things for council? Is this the bulk of this?
Yeah, the bulk of it is to replace the chairs at the council, at the council table. Those chairs, I believe, were brought over from the prior Town Hall. Yeah.
Well, in the best interest of a tax reduction, I'm quite willing to sit on this bouncy chair and sit down there sometimes and sit up here sometimes for another year. So if everyone else in council feels that way, and we're not prepared to give up twenty percent of our salary, maybe we can give this one up. So I challenge you to do that. That's my speech.
In addition to the chairs, it's also an extension table for the regional councillor.
And I apologize to our regional councillor, Wayne Furtick, who's sitting in the audience, that he won't have a place to sit.
Counsel Vane?
Again, I have to respectfully disagree with my peer, Mr. Frick, Counsel Frick. These chairs, this chamber, everything is old. These chairs, as Counsel Frick himself just said, were up and down most of the night, because the chairs don't hold us. I mean, I mean, I have a twenty-eight inch waist and don't weigh hardly anything, and I keep slipping down. So I, I think that, why are you laughing, Stephen? That, I'm telling you, Rodney Dangerfield gets more respect than I do. You do, buddy, you do. The, but no, I think seriously, and I get it, it's an easy, it's an easy thing. You know, anything the council gives up, everybody's going to think that's great. But realistically, I mean, this is not a selfish thing by any means. We should have our regional councillor sitting up here with us. We're going to be getting tables and microphones for the staff that are sitting over there, so they don't have to constantly get up. The chairs, I've seen the new chairs, they're not that expensive. They're actually very nice and a lot more comfortable than the ones we're sitting on right now. So I will be supporting this motion. I just think, again, I think this is just a nominal, you know, let's throw it out there, and we'll impress everybody at how we're giving up something. I don't think it's worth it.
Counsel Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. So I was under the impression that this included mics for staff. Does this include mics for staff that will cue the cameras?
Does it? Yeah. Oh, okay.
Okay, good, because I've been telling people that part of this cost is mics, like similar to that one there, that will cue the staff so that we know when, or so that they'll be on camera when they're speaking. Because now that we're going to committee of the whole, am I correct? Like, committee of the whole, there'll be staff here, and they'll be able to explain to us and residents what is going on. And so I think that's something that we don't want to, if we, if we defeat this, how will that affect staff speaking at committee of the whole?
They'll have to come up to the podium to speak.
Thanks. Any further comments? Counsel Vane?
Sorry, I'm stealing this one from Counsel Cadwell, because he didn't put his hand up. As he indicated at other councils of the hall, that's the way things are done. The staff have their microphones over there. We don't have to go back and forth and wait, and we don't have the regional chair sitting out in the audience or over in the back over there. It just, it's time to become more efficient. That's all.
We could always defer committee of the hall, but that's a whole other discussion. Anyone else?
Recorded vote.
All right, moved by Counsel Frick, second by Counsel Cadwell, resolve that Resolution Number C-20-85 of the Budget Committee of the Hall, meeting minutes of February 18, 2020, remain as recommended. So--
Recorded vote.
It's a recorded vote by Counsel Frick. Counsel Bothwell?
Nay.
Counsel Dunstall?
Yea.
Counsel Frick?
Nay.
Counsel Cadwell?
Yea.
Counsel Ritchie?
Nay.
Counsel Sharp?
Nay.
Counsel Vane?
Yea.
Counsel Vardy?
Nay.
And myself, even though I sat on these chairs when I was an alderman back in the old Town Hall, I'm a nay. Up next, we have Resolution C-20-89, the Main Street East Cultural Heritage Landscape or Heritage Conservation District Study. Moved by Counsel Vane, second by Counsel Dunstall. Moved by Counselor Vane, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that Resolution Number C-20-89 be lifted from the Budget Committee of the Hall, meeting minutes of February 18, 2020, for separate consideration. All in favor? That's lifted. Discussion, Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I'd really like to defer to staff as to their comments on this study and as to, I'm a little concerned about it being called a cultural heritage study when it encompasses Main Street East, which has other varieties of landscape like commercial and the hospital. That's where I'm getting hung up on.
The resolution that was passed by Committee of the Hall, I believe, identified a cultural heritage landscape study or a heritage conservation district study. Again, they're like two different, completely different things. What we were hoping to do is, once we got the Grimsby Beach study underway and put to bed, and underway, we were hoping to come back to council to get more direction on which way would be most appropriate to go. Because, like I said, they're two completely different studies. Cultural heritage landscape study is essentially looking at the landscape and considering the culture, man-made culture within, in the landscape, and see what's worthy of preservation and what kind of policies would be appropriate to protect that culture, cultural heritage landscape. Now, heritage conservation district is essentially like a heritage designation of a singular, single property, but over a larger area, so it covers an area as opposed to an individual property. And it's a significantly more arduous process to get buy-in from the community in terms of the area that's specifically being designated under the Ontario Heritage Act. So, again, having said that, we feel that we need to sort of give an analysis to council to give you a better idea of what each one, what deliverables each one could give you, what process you'd need to follow for each, for each type of study, and then council can make the decision which way, which way it wants to go. That would be my recommendation.
So if we are looking at the Main Street East, that's quite a, quite a large street. We had another study that was in the process, but only encompassed, was that two, two or three blocks of Main Street East, which was the, we called it the Hospital District, but that, that was only a couple of blocks of Main Street East. So is $100,000 even enough money to put aside for a study that might encompass a larger area is, is another concern.
Yeah, I would, I would have the same concern. Again, Main Street East, because we're looking at the area right from downtown, which is Robinson Street approximately, right to the easterly boundary where the new school is going to be built. So if you can visualize the kind of landscape that we have throughout that entire area, it varies significantly, you know. So from downtown to Nellis Road, there's a good, good base of older homes that, that you could identify as a cohesive, cohesive area. And once you get past Nellis Road, there are smatterings of heritage buildings, heritage properties, like 133 Main Street East as an example, and, but with a lot of new development. You know, even down close to Baker Road, you have, you have the baseball park, you have townhouses with rear lotting onto Main Street, you have Mount View with rear lotting onto Main Street. East of, east of Baker Road, again, there's a variety of different types of housing forms, and then it changes again once you get to Bartlett and beyond that. So it's, it's, it's significant in terms of the types of, the types of, the type of streetscape, let's say, type of streetscape that you see and experience as you're driving through town. The, the study that you're referring to was, you know, we called it the Hospital Corridor Study, but it was, it was a land use study. It wasn't a, it wasn't a heritage study. It was, it was kind of encompassed everything. It was supposed to cover traffic, land use, streetscape, everything. So it was a land use study. It was a secondary plan that we were looking to implement there. So, again, but it was a very defined area, a small area. Again, like you said, that was $100,000. So, again, I'm concerned that $100,000 may, may be wishful thinking if we're looking at the entirety of Main Street right from downtown to the east end.
I just wondered if anybody else could weigh in with some comments on this, because I'm, I'm somewhat a little confused about what we're really trying to do here.
Counselor Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. So I had some comments about this, and we talked about this late at night at the last Committee of the Hall meeting, but, so I'm an estimator, I write budgets, right? And I, and we put numbers in, there's line items, all right? But they're, this is the, the point where we assign money for things, and I think that we spent quite a bit of time talking about what type of study we would do. And I made an example of like, if you're making a budget to go for lunch, all right? Like, you'll include, you know, $100 bucks, that's five people, $20 a piece, all right? But you don't decide, you don't even have to decide where you're going for lunch, but you certainly don't decide what you're going to eat for lunch or how you're going to order what you're going to eat. All you need to know is roughly how much it costs so that you can plan to have enough money. And so I, I have a question here. When, when we amended the motion at the Committee of the Hall to say that it would be a cultural heritage landscape or a cultural heritage district, conservation district, that, it doesn't preclude us from, from doing any type of heritage study. It's, we have $100,000 for, assigned for a study in the, in the Main Street East, right?
That's correct, and my, my hope is to have the planning department look into this issue in a little more detail and provide a little more information to, to council so that it can better understand what the implications of each type of study would be, and we'd probably get a better idea of how much each one would be.
So just to follow up on that, when, when we, we spent so much time going over that and, and really narrowing those details down, which are not, that's not the phase we're at right now, and, and there were some councillors, I'm not sure, but, but I considered, and I support this study, I considered voting against it because I was not ready without staff opinion on what, on what type of study was most effective and what type of study. I wasn't ready to, to narrow it down to what we were doing, and I think that, that we made a mistake as a council by trying to, by trying to define in our budget the exact study that we're going to do. And I'll support a study for, for Main Street East, and I'd like to see a report from staff. Can we, can we amend the motion? I'd like to amend the motion to, if you can help me with the wording, I'd like it to say that we, that we have a study for Main Street East and that staff bring a report recommending which type of study would best meet our desired outcome.
So does that mean you want to defer it?
No, I'd like to amend it to say that we include $100,000 for a study for Main Street East and that staff brings a report and recommendation on which type of study would best meet our desired outcome. So, so it's, this, if I, it's kind of wordy. I want to include $100,000 and I want staff to make a report, which one is best for us to, to achieve our desired outcome. Yeah, so include $100,000 and get a recommendation from staff. Can I, if I make that motion, is there anyone who would second it?
All right, so, so you talked to, Counselor Bothwell, you talked to the amendment now, but.
Okay, I'll speak to that amendment then. I think it's important that we remember that this is, that it's, the cultural heritage landscape study or a heritage conservation district study are not guided by staff. They are brought forward by either the, through, which the community did, they raised the concern that they wanted a heritage conservation district, which we heard loud and clear. So it's guided by what the community brings forward, and it's usually vetted through the heritage committee. So there's a whole process as to how these discussions should take place, and it isn't supposed to be guided by staff to tell heritage committee or council what, what are the best options to do. Those, I can see a report being prepared, but it's, again, it isn't to, we're looking at a cultural heritage landscape or heritage conservation district. It's not to then say, well, there's potential of a secondary plan or another type of land use plan. So I think we just have to be cautious that we don't, that we look at how the structure under the Ontario Heritage Act is for the relationship of these, of these discussions, and we don't dictate that we, we're asking staff to tell us what to do. I, I will go back just to saying too, that when, when Mr. Basic mentioned about the size of, and the cost, we did some research on costs, and they're between 70 and 80K for this type of study for heritage conservation districts, and some of them are over 1,000 residential units.
So I just want to comment to that. So we do want opinion from staff. We have a planning department, like, in this budget that we have, there's like, so we have planners. Counselor Bothwell, do you have any planning? Do you have any education in planning?
I think you're getting off topic.
So, no, no, I'm still speaking, so.
Well, I'm going to call a point of order on that.
Well, then I'll appeal the point of order. So, because, so what I'm saying is, and I'll stop, I won't.
Then we'll vote on your appeal. All in favor of Counselor Sharp's appeal of the point of order? Okay, we're moving on. Counselor Vane?
Couple of things, I'm going to take a different approach. First of all, the heritage committee, I would like to remind council, is strictly an advisory committee. They have no authority, we make the decisions. Second of all, I do support Counselor Sharp, that we have a proper, highly trained planning department, and I would very much like to hear from them. I don't support the idea of a heritage study on a street that is 60% brand new. So I don't see, like, I can see portions of it, but I think we need to do a study that's not a heritage study. We need to do a study on the land and say, as Mr. Basic said, you know, between Robinson and Nellis, yeah, we have, we could designate that portion, those homes as heritage, but beyond that, you start getting down around Dorchester, we're starting to add all these new homes and stuff down there, what's the point in making that a heritage area? It just doesn't make any sense. Like, what does heritage become, five years old and older? Like, it's just, so I agree with what Counselor Sharp was saying, that we need to have staff input, and we need to do a proper study, not a heritage study. And just because the heritage committee, the advisory committee suggests it to us, the elected members, I think that's the decision that we need to make based on what our staff says. So I do support Counselor Sharp on this one.
Counselor Ritchie?
Thanks, no problem. Thanks, through the mayor. Just a question to, to Mr. Basic. If we were to send this to you, what would you actually do when you look at the whole, the whole study? What would you be bringing back to council?
Because there are two different animals. What we would do is identify, we wouldn't make a recommendation necessarily, what we would do is identify what the process is for each one, what, what work stream we would have to follow for each, each of the two studies. Because the resolution that I, that I, that was passed by the Committee of the Hall was one or the other, so from what I could tell, there's no specific direction on which way to go. So it sounds like council needs more information. So that would be the purpose of the report, would be to identify what each study entails, and maybe we could refine the, the budget a little bit better for each one, and, and that's basically it. We'd provide more information to council so that council could decide better which study to go with, because the direction that we have so far isn't to do one or the other, it's not to do both, it's unknown. We don't know, we haven't received any direction on which way we should go. So we need more direction, and what the report would do is just identify the, the different mechanics of each, of each study.
Thank you. Counselor Vardy?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, I'm not feeling so hot tonight, and I've, I've hung in here specifically for this item because I think it's so, so very important, and it's important to Ward Two, and it's important to Grimsby writ large. As I understand it, the, the heritage landscape falls under the Heritage Act, the other one falls under the Ontario Planning Act. We have, we have proposed development right now on Main Street East, where depending what happens there, could have a whole domino effect about what happens all, all the way down the rest of the road. The advantage to the, the heritage study under the Heritage Act is that it looks at a whole district, not just at a house, not just at the property the house sits on, but it looks at the community. And I think we've had a very active community that has spoken very loud and clear about what it is that they want, and, and it is a, 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 a study under the Heritage Act. That is the only thing that will give us the kind of protection that we're looking for, you know, and, and I'll just say, Counselor Vane said earlier, and I, I wrote it down because I wanted to take it word for word, the reason we got elected was to stop out of control development, okay? And, and he says that's a commitment that he's taken very seriously. Well, that community doesn't stop on the west side of Main and Nellis, I'm sorry. It goes a lot further, there's, there's, you know, we know that there's other properties that are going to go up for sale, and I don't think the community in Ward Two or Grimsby writ large want to see Little Burlington on that part of Main Street. And that's why we need to, you know, like, now's the time to look at, how do we protect that area? How do we respond to what our residents have told us that, that we wanted? So how do we be responsible counselors in this manner? And for me, the choice is clear, it's, it's doing something under the Heritage Act. So, thank you.
Counselor Frick?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think I could have said it better than that. But, you know, it's, again, it's a case of, we're not listening to the residents of Ward Two and the community at large. God knows, in the last year, we have, we have listened to a lot of delegations about protecting that area. We know, as Counselor Vardy said, that if we, we don't do this right, we open the doors for who knows what to come into that community. So the only way to protect that and to stop that from happening is to do the right study, obviously. I do have a question for you, Walter, if this is okay. You spoke about two studies, one's under the Heritage Act, one is under the Planning Act. The one that is the, I guess the Planning Act one. The one that is the, I guess the Planning Act one, if that's, if that study is done, can any of the information used in that study be used in the other study? I mean, can they, are they, do they run parallel in some way, shape, or other? That's a question, but anyway.
Not really, you, you're looking at, you're looking at different things. Cultural heritage landscape is landscape, it's not, it's not the, the built fabric of, of the community, which is, which is the heritage conservation district, right? So, yeah, you'd be studying different things, absolutely. It's, but it's not something that, again, counsel needs to decide what it wants to do. The resolution we have so far is one or the other, there's no, there's really no direction there. So we just, my suggestion is to look at both in more detail and give you the pros and cons of each one. And, and then that way you'll have more information, you can decide which one you want to do. That's really what I was suggesting.
Yeah, that's the way the motion reads now, either one or the other. We just have to decide which, where we direct you. Anyways, I would definitely support the, the district study, but I'm, I'm still on defense with the landscape study. Anyways, thank you.
Point of order, there's a motion on the floor to amend that motion. And the amendment was to include $100,000 for a Main Street East study, and to have staff make a report as to what type of study would best meet our desired outcome.
Well, why don't I read the amended resolution? And that may clarify it for our counsel. Resolve that Resolution Number C-20-89 of the Budget Committee of the Whole, meeting minutes of February 18th, 2020, be amended to read. Resolve that a Main Street East study for the 2020 budget be approved, and staff be directed to bring a report, a report to provide the different options. So that, for a little clarification, it's the two studies that are recommended here?
Not necessarily.
I see that, so it's...
So we have a professional staff, and, and they act in the, in their professional capacity. They are actually legally required to give us professional advice. And, and we're actually, according to our counsel and staff relationship policy, we're not allowed to, to question their professional advice. Because we're, I'm not a, so I have exactly this much planning expertise, none. All right, I read things, I read reports, I don't, I'm not a planner. I mean, I took some surveying classes in school, I, I can get out of Total Station, I can tell you how many minutes and degrees and seconds to look over this way and that way, but I'm not a land surveyor, I'm not a planner, I'm not a heritage consultant. I'm, in fact, to my extent, none of us are, but there are people who, who have those qualifications. In fact, we pay them to be our planning department. And so Counselor Bothwell said earlier, and I quote, "It isn't supposed to be guided by staff." What is staff, we hire staff to guide us in their professional capacity. And so, excuse me, we have planners, and we, we have, we have planners with heritage background. And, and so we need to include money, we're at, we're at the budget phase, this is where I started with this. We, what we're trying to do is include $100,000. When, when it comes time, we will decide what type of study to do. All right, and back to my lunch...
You mean staff will decide?
No, we will decide via a, a, a resolution, we will decide what type of study. Staff will give us options, and we'll decide, that's how counsel works. I can't, like, you guys, I don't know if you understand this, we're writing a budget. Back to my, the lunch option, we're, we are providing an amount that, that we have as a line item. And then, as a counsel, we all sit around this table, staff brings us recommendations, because they're the professionals, not us. Like, there are two qualifications, we need to be 18 years old, we need to be qualified to vote, like... So I don't have any planning expertise, so I look to Walter, our director, and, and the planners in our, in our department. And then they give us professional advice. And then eight of us, nine including the mayor, put our hands up and we decide what to do. And so we're at the budget point right now, so what we're deciding is, do we include $100,000 for a study in Main Street East? And then staff will give us direction on, and you know what, staff could say, hey, I recommend this. And we could say, no, nix it, we want to do that, all right? We could say, we want the one that's $200,000, we can way exceed the budget, we, we have the power of the vote. And we are way off track here, way off track, and...
Yeah, yes, on that note, I think we need to move forward. Counselor Cadwell hasn't spoken on the issue yet.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan.
Do a lot of research and talking with people. The heritage conservation district study, there's a lot of meat and potatoes in that, and I get it, I understand it, and I've been rehashing it over, but does the, does this study have any restricted limitations to economic development? Again, I'm thinking of Main Street East as a, in general. That's, I guess my question is to, Mr. Basic?
Well, I can't, I can't make that determination at this point, that depends on what the, what the conclusion of the study is. There, there could be potentially some positive economic development, spinoffs as a result of it, notoriety for the heritage of a certain section of Main Street or sections of Main Street. So, so I really, I really can't answer that question, because it predetermines a conclusion of a study.
Counselor Vane?
I, I would like to see a study of this whole area, to see, from an economic development point of view, from a heritage point of view, from whatever else. I don't agree with us, and I, this is my terminology and just my personal opinion, but I'm, I'm getting a little flustered that we're constantly using the Heritage Act as a weapon to stop development. That's not the intention of it. I want to say, there is parts of Main Street East that I fully support, should be designated as heritage. But when I get down to Dorchester, and I look at the development that's going in there, and the new houses around there, how do you justify that? Then I want to make every neighborhood a heritage neighborhood. So I just think we need to do as Counselor Sharp has said, let's do a study. Let's not give them particular boundaries and say, it must be heritage this, or it must be heritage that. Let's then do a study, let them tell us what to do. That's, as Counselor Sharp said, and I fully agree with him, 100%, they're the experts, we are not. We can read whatever we want. I've been in law for 30 years, I still go to school and study it. Doesn't mean I'm an expert, just because I work in it or I've read about it. So they're the professionals, I say, give it to them and let them decide.
And, and I'll just chime in on, on this for a little bit. I don't think we're, we're doing anything to stifle development unless it means tearing down a historic home to stifle that development. And, and I want to preserve anything that, that has the cultural heritage, has, is a heritage home. It just, it just befuddles me when a developer, and nothing more than greed, they will tear something down that's 100 years old, 150 years old, cut a tree down that's 250 years old, offer a little bit of profit, and then they move on to the next development and do the same thing again. So my comments might not be from a professional, but they're passionate. So Counselor Bothwell?
Just going to quickly go back to where we got to where we are, because there was a motion at the last meeting to try to call it just a study. And we were clearly saying, this community does not want to go back to calling it a secondary plan or a study. There's no ambiguity here, it's very clear, the community wants actually a heritage conservation district under Part Five of the OHA. As, subject to that, we have a cultural heritage landscape already established in our official plan for this area. And now it's refining that through what our official plan states is, is our, one of our priorities. And Main Street is one of the priorities identified in the official plan to do that. A heritage conservation district will not stop development, it won't preclude economic development, it won't do any of those things. It will, it actually says, "A designation of a heritage conservation district enables a municipality to manage and guide future changes in the heritage conservation district through the adoption of a heritage conservation district plan which contains policies, guidelines, and procedures with respect to achieving the objectives of and managing change in the heritage conservation district." So change is going to happen, it's how does that happen? And it's a public process, developers can attend, they can contribute. So everybody has a say in how this will rule out. I think it's important when we look at the motion in front of us tonight, that we leave it the way it is worded, which is that a council undertake a heritage, a cultural heritage landscape or heritage conservation district study, and that we are looking at the money that we're sending aside, the process as to how we undertake that. I certainly, we certainly will be seeking planning staff's guidance through that process, through the appropriate channels and the committees for which they need to go through. So no, it's not, we're saying we're doing it on our own. It is going to go through the proper process, and that's quite well established through the official plan. So I just want to say that I think we need to stick to the, like, my feeling is, the motion that's before us identifies what the community wants, which is that council focus on the cultural heritage landscape or heritage conservation district study, not just a study. It opens it up back to secondary plan, and that is not where we want to go.
Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you, through the mayor. This is some of the points I was bringing up with the Committee of the Whole. I have to agree with Counselor Sharp, that we're looking to see a study of Main Street East multiple times. I understand Ward Two is a little bit different with the heritage and what it has there. But when we go Baker Road East especially, there, there's, there is a few heritage homes, but not a lot. And they can easily be identified one by one. And again, for me, if we're looking at any kind of study, I would like to see, because it's not necessarily, you know, there's a few houses in our area of Ward One, I would like to see what else we should be looking at off of the rest of Main Street East. Like they said, 60% of it is newer development. So I'm not saying that part of it could be a district, but I'm just saying that we need to look at the overall picture. And I think that, again, for myself, that I would like staff to identify, because maybe from the hospital east is a different kind of study. And that's, that's what I like to see. So I will, I'll be supporting the amendment from Counselor Sharp.
Just one last thing through...
Counselor Sharp?
Through the mayor, is that I'm supporting including money for this budget. And then staff will bring a recommendation or a report, I mean, and then we will decide what, which to include, like, so... We don't need to decide right now what type of study it is.
Counselor Vardy?
Thank you, through, through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I completely support Counselor Bothwell's comments. I think it's quite clear what it is that the community wants and what it is that, that we need to do. I want to state for the record, I am not anti-development. I want to state for the record, I don't believe that doing a heritage district study is weaponizing the Heritage Act to, to be against developers. And I just want to add, because, you know, Counselor Sharp was saying, well, just leave it up to our planners, let our planners tell us what to do. Well, if, if you go to the doctor with a serious illness, one of the things that he or she would tell you to do is get a second opinion. You know, planning is not an exact science. There's an element of interpretation. So there are aspects that, where some might interpret differently. And, and that's why you want to bring consultants on, in order to get, you know, a, a full understanding of, of what are all of the options. So, you know, no offense to our planning department, but I think consultants also can provide us a great deal of important input.
Counselor Sharp?
That's not what I said, I didn't say let staff decide, I said, have staff write a report. Staff will give us information, and we will decide based on the staff report. So what I'm saying is, let's not let counsel give a recommendation what to do, let's let staff give a, a report, and then let counsel decide what to do. And that's what my amendment to the motion is, and...
Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you, through the mayor. You know, again, this is one of our strategic priorities that we have in place. But like other things in the budget, that we've had to make some cuts. And again, I, I don't want to cut this out, but I have received multiple emails of people saying they want all our studies cut. And like I said, so for, for this here, I would like to see it, that if we're going to do a study, I also don't want to just, you know, and there is a need for part of Main Street East to look at a heritage district, but there's also a large portion of Main Street East that you should be looking at other aspects of. And that's, again, that's why I sit there and say there should be a Main Street East study.
Moved by Counselor Sharp, second by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that Resolution Number C-20-89 of the Budget Committee of the Whole, meeting minutes of February 18th, 2020, be amended to read. Resolve that a Main Street East study for the 2020 budget be approved, and staff be directed to bring up a report to provide the different options. Counselor Bothwell?
Nay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yea.
Counselor Frank?
Nay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Nay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yea.
Counselor Sharp?
Yea.
Counselor Vane?
Yea.
Counselor Vardy?
Nay.
And I myself say nay, so that's defeated. So that puts the original motion back on the table. The amendment's been defeated. So the original motion reads... Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to put another amendment on that we defer this to next year.
Sorry, we need a seconder, Counselor Ritchie's mover, Counselor Vane's a seconder. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Vane. Resolve that Resolution Number C-20-89 of the Budget Committee of the Whole, meeting minutes of February 18th, 2020, be amended to read. Resolve that the Main Street East cultural heritage landscape or heritage conservation district study be deferred. Comments on the amendment? Counselor Sharp?
I won't support this, I am in favor of including the money for this study. It's just that I want staff to give us a report on what type of study we can do. Right, it's, we can't make an informed decision without information. And so I, I will not support this, I want to keep the money in the budget. I don't want this to be misunderstood by the newspaper or Save Main Street to say, like, Dave doesn't support this. I do support it, I just want a report from staff.
Seeing no, Counselor Ritchie?
So the reason why I've, I've asked to defer this is because I know there's lots of pressures put on by this one development right now. And my opinion, just my opinion, is that since the application is there and it's in, no matter what study we do, it's not going to help that development. We're going to have to rely on our official plan and the policies we have in place. The application's in and therefore the rules that apply to him from the date he put his application in is what he will be judged against. And that's why I'm saying, so if that's the situation, yes, there's going to be pressures, but I don't see any immediate pressures at this time.
Counselor Bothwell?
There are immediate pressures all along Main Street East. There's large properties, right? One twenty-two Main is a huge property right now that's, there's consideration. It's just, it's just, we're looking at designating it because it's just huge. There's so much potential for these large estate lots to be subdivided. You see, see it happening Main Street West down at the further end. Three fourteen Main, the Corneve property, we're getting fifty, fifty-seven units in there. Not, sorry, yeah. And then we have, you know, the, the Latchford one a little further along, which is next to a designated property where we have large estate lots. So the pressures are all along Main Street. Yes, it isn't just one property. It's saying, we recognize that we have thirty-nine cultural heritage landscapes and the majority of them are identifying our Main Street East, our Main Street, as one of the, the key cultural heritage features of Grimsby. So the pressures are on all the way along. We have to start somewhere. And the Heritage Committee said, we're going to do it in three pieces. Start with East, do downtown, which is also a significant area that's under pressure, and then west. So the pressures are there everywhere. It's not this one develop.
Counselor Vane?
I agree with Counselor Ritchie. I think that if we start designating all these places as heritage, I, I think that we're, we're getting a little carried away when we're taking a street or a section of street that has sixty percent new builds and trying to designate it as heritage. Now, I mean, if that's the case, I mean, we're getting, I, I think we're getting a little much on this. First of all, if a developer has a property, and we know there's a couple that have been bought along there, and we suddenly decide to start doing this, this study, I'll guarantee you, we're going to get a bunch of applications. So we're just kind of shooting ourselves on the foot. I have no problem with designating properties. I don't want to designate sixty percent of the street, which is brand new, as heritage. Because you know what? Let's come and do my neighborhood. It's less than ten years old. I mean, and, and, like, where do we draw the line? Like, this is getting silly. Like, Counselor Sharp had brought forth a good idea, which has been shot down, and that's fine. But we need to get a proper reading from our own planning staff. We can't just sit there and go, yeah, because the community wants, well, did we not see tonight? We've came in here and saying this is what the community wanted. We've just cut it in half. So where do we draw the line? Like, this is getting out of control. I, I think the heritage is being abused. That's what I think.
Counselor Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, I one hundred percent agree with, with, with Counselor Bothwell. We cannot just assume that by putting this off, it's, it's, we can put this off for, for another year. This, we already know that there's a lot of developers that have their eyes on property along that whole strip, just waiting for us to make the wrong move. Yes, this, this is a study, okay? This is a study is what we're talking about here. We're not putting rules in place. We're not putting regulations or legislation in place or any, or policies. This is a study. So let's get this study done so we can decide if we have enough evidence and information to make this a district or a landscape area. That's what this is all about. We're not trying to stop development. I don't think anyone in this council is anti-development. But you can't put this thing off for another year while, while developers go in and buy up properties while we're sitting on our haunches waiting for something to happen. We need to do this now. And I think that this is not, this is a study, guys. This is not, we're not, we're not putting messages and signs up saying developers not allowed. We're just doing a study so they can make a decision as to what to do next. That's all it is. And yes, this is a heritage town. Let's, let's get that straight. This town goes back to the year seventeen ninety, whatever. We're going to have a two-hundred-year anniversary next year, I think, whenever it is. So this is a heritage town. It's a culture town. We have to accept that. That's why we're here. A lot of us are here for those reasons. The folks who are here tonight. I mean, we have a lot of areas in town and along Main Street contains, I think you said, thirty-nine structures or whatever, whatever number there are. There's a lot of them. And there's, there is a number of them along between Baker and, and Dorchester, our Ward Two, Counselor Ritchie. So let's get the study done. Let's get the study, study done along the lines of what this town's all about, which is culture and heritage. We can't dismiss that. We have to do it. And let's just get it done and move on and, and make our decision from there. It is a study. It is not, we're not making decisions about anything except it's a study to figure out what we can do next. Thank you.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. The reason I supported this because under the Heritage Planning Act, Part Five, there is a lot of, a lot of, again, I use the phrase meat matatus, and that, that's just reading through the, the section of Part Five there. I think it's, I just feel it's the right thing to do at this time. The event of a conflict by overriding zoning and other bylaws, which, which could result in, in, you know, fewer litigations between the town and developers. It just, I, I, I just feel this is the right study at this time, working with staff. Obviously, we're going to, we're going to, staff is going to go out and look for, do a study with a consultant with the, with the, with the conservation background, heritage conservation background. So again, I'm looking forward to see what, what comes forward with this, this, this study here, so. Anyways, that's my comments.
Seeing no further comments, I just feel that we, it, it, the time is now. Deferring it is, is far too dangerous. So we'll vote on this amendment. Recorded vote. I'll read it again. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Vane. Resolve that resolution C twenty dash eighty-nine of the Budget Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of February eighteenth be amended to read. Resolve that the Main Street East cultural heritage landscape or heritage conservation district study be deferred. Recorded vote. Counselor Bothwell?
Nay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yea.
Counselor Frank?
Nay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Nay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yea.
Counselor Sharp?
Nay.
Counselor Vane?
Yea.
Counselor Barty?
Nay.
And I myself is a nay. That is defeated. Moved by Counselor Frank, second by Counselor Barty. Resolve that resolution number C twenty dash eighty-nine, the budget, of the Budget Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, remain as recommended. Recorded vote. Any discussion? Counselor Bothwell?
Yea.
Counselor Dunstall?
Nay.
Counselor Frank?
Yea.
Counselor Cadwell?
Mayor, point of clarification here? Did you just?
Yes. What would you? Yeah. Moved by Counselor Frank, second by Counselor Vane. Resolve that resolution number C twenty dash eighty-nine of the Budget Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, remain as recommended.
So this is about the heritage study now?
Yes.
I'm supporting the heritage study.
Sorry, it's late.
Counselor Ritchie?
Nay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yea.
Counselor Vane?
Nay.
Counselor Barty?
Yea.
And myself, I'm a yea, so that is carried. I need a mover and a seconder for the budget of the whole. Counselor Vane, Counselor Frank? Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Frank. Resolve that the Budget Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty be received and the recommendations contained therein be approved as amended. All in favor? Counselor?
So this, you would, we would be approving every?
Yeah.
So everything that was previously, so there were still items like transit and um. So those would be?
They stayed. They weren't lifted. All in favor? That's carried. Now back to our regular portion of the meeting. Need a mover and a seconder for the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting minutes? Vane? And Frank? Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Frank. Resolve that the Parks and Recreation and Culture Committee meeting minutes of February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty be received and the recommendations contained therein be approved. All in favor? That's carried. You can change Dunstall to part-time because he didn't invite. Okay, for planning and development, moved by Counselor Bothwell. Second by Counselor Sharp. Resolve that the Planning and Development Committee meeting minutes of February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty be received and the recommendations contained therein be approved. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by Counselor Cadwell. Second by Counselor Ritchie. Resolve that the GDAC meeting minutes of February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty be received and filed. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, we have correspondence from Minister Steve Clark, Ministry of Municipal Affairs, with reference to municipal modernization program. The town received a twenty thousand dollar grant from Minister Clark today to study economies of scale between the different firefighting departments in Niagara West. So mover, Counselor Frank? Seconder, Counselor Ritchie? Moved by Counselor Frank, second by Counselor Ritchie. Resolve that the correspondence from Minister Steve Clark, Ministry of Municipal Affairs, with reference to municipal modernization program be received. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by Counselor Cadwell. Seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that the correspondence from the region Niagara regarding the West Lincoln Memorial Hospital resolution be received. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by Counselor Sharp. Second by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that the correspondence from the region in Niagara with reference to the ecological land classification mapping update be received. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by Counselor Bothwell. Second by Counselor Frank. Resolve that the correspondence from Adams Modern Head with reference to decorum in the council chambers as suggested by Counselor Dunstall be received. Counselor Dunstall, you'd like to speak on that?
Yes, I would, Your Worship, thank you. I just, just wanted to have it noted that the recipient is a member of the Committee of Adjustment, and I'm wondering if there's a bit of a conflict here. I was wondering if we could look into that and see if there's any issues there.
Yeah, I guess we could have staff look into that. Can we just receive it right now? Or how does that work? It's correspondence, right? We can't receive it? All right. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, second by Counselor Frank. Resolve that the correspondence from Adams Modern Head with reference to decorum in the council chambers as suggested by Counselor Dunstall be received. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by Counselor Frank. Second by Counselor Sharp. Resolve that the correspondence from Mike Willscroft, President of the, of the Grimsby District, or Grimsby Downtown GDIA, with reference to the two thousand and twenty Town of Grimsby budget be received. All in favor? Carried. All right. We need a seconder for Counselor Dunstall's resolution. Counselor Ritchie? Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Ritchie. Resolve whereas the Planning Committee hold open houses and statutory public meetings for development applications where public, the public attends and can become disruptive and whereas the public should not be intimidated to speak on any matter because other members of the public show a reaction. And whereas council is moving to Committee of the Whole and in all meetings will be livestreamed and whereas decorum can be described as decency, good manners, good taste, courtesy, respectability, and dignity, and in keeping with good taste and propriety. Therefore be it resolved that council includes a process for decorum in the council chamber meetings, including open houses and statutory public meetings in the procedural bylaw. Comment, Counselor Bothwell?
I'm really proud of our community. When I have to host an open house or statutory meeting, I have a hundred and twenty passionate people here, either for or against the development. I'm, I'm just really, really proud of them, of how they contain themselves and show respect to the parties that are presenting and to the people who are speaking. Yes, occasionally we'll get clapping. Tonight, we had a whole lot of clapping. But I've been very fortunate that it, I've never found as chair of those meetings that it's been disrupted. that it's been disruptive, or to the point where it has made, made me have to say, whoa, stop and, and leave chambers like has happened in the past with the former council. So I, I just want to say that I think that as the correspondence that's included in our agenda states, we have to be extremely cautious as to how we look at this item, and that we do respect the Charter of Rights and Freedoms and freedoms of people for, to express themselves. And I think, I, I hope it's not a targeted motion here because it seemed to be targeted towards planning open houses and statutory meetings. But I would like to see that a wide range of, that we research how other municipalities have included that, especially the region who's undergone quite a bit of extensive concern with regards to how they've handled theirs, and that if we do put it in there that we're very respectful of the Charter of Rights, and we don't restrict people from having the ability to, to be as respectful as they are in Grinsby.
Thank you. Counselor Dunstall, sorry, I didn't let you speak first.
Yeah, that's okay. It's, it's getting late, eh? Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to read something here that somebody's sent me. That, and this is what I'm trying to get at, is that it is improper decorum that limits free speech. Hoots or jeers, or even applause can intimidate some of our residents from providing their input, especially if they hold a minority view. Proper decorum creates a friendly space where residents can feel more comfortable to bring forward their input. I have no problem defending the town limiting improper decorum in order to increase meaningful input from all our residents. And, and so what I, as we saw tonight when we had our delegations up here, it's nerve-wracking to get up at this podium and to speak. And if you're coming to a, a planning public meeting to speak something in favor when the majority of the audience is against something, it's pretty intimidating to get up to that pulpit and speak in a positive way about something when everybody else is clapping and applauding when somebody comes up and says something negative about whatever it is. And I, I just don't find it very, well, it's, it's an unfriendly atmosphere. And I, I would really like to see us have a little more control over it, and that's why I brought that forward.
Thank you. Counselor Frick?
That's a tough one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how you control that, Counselor Dunstall. I mean, we had, I don't know how many people are here tonight. I mean, how are you going to stop people from showing their feelings, or applauding, or booing and ahhing, and so on and so forth? It, it's, let me finish. It's like going to a hockey game and telling them not to cheer. I mean, it's, you can't... But you can't, you can't control an audience. And I think for most of the open houses and other meetings like tonight, people quietly applauded, and they did their oohs and ahs, and so on and so forth. I don't find that intimidating, and I don't think the people up there find them, found them very intimidating either. As long as we as council, as long as we as council make them feel comfortable, I think that's okay. I don't, but I don't know how you control it. I, I, I would be at a loss. I wish I knew the answer, but I don't know how we do it. We can, we can dictate some rules, and, but even those will be broken, I'm sure. Anyways, my comments.
Counselor Sharp?
Yeah, no, I, I, I just wanted to say that Counselor Bothwell had a good suggestion. Well, let's see what other municipalities do. Because I think if you want a good, a good, honest cross-section of people's opinions on certain matters, if you walk into a, a, a meeting and the majority of people are looking at the situation one way, anybody that has a different opinion, especially if they're the minority, are going to shrivel up and not say anything. And I, I just don't find that it allows residents who have something different to say than what is being said when there's all this going on. And if, if it can be said at the beginning of the meeting, we would respect that everybody would try and refrain from clapping and cheering when somebody says something that they'd like to hear.
Counselor Sharp?
So, thank you, Mayor Jordan. One of the things that I noticed is that, so when people start clapping and making a bit of a noise, alright? It's like, then other people are now, like, there's a commotion going on. And so you get the guy sitting here who goes like, they make those comments. They're like, that's what she said, alright? And like, but then they, they feel like, because of the noise and the commotion, it empowers them to make their, their, their little comments, right? And they're often rude, they're always rude. And so, and then on the, on the other, so because, like I said, it inspires people. It's the wrong word, but it gets, when, when you, when you create that atmosphere, then people become, they start to do things. One guy whistled here tonight, alright? Another guy got up and yelled, and then walked out. And we said like, oh, you know, that's not allowed, just keep, you know, whatever. And then there was a guy sitting...
I, I'm gonna just interrupt on that. I think he was actually escorted out because we had acting, our Fire Chief Bill Thompson here, kind of watching the situation. And I'll let, I'll defer back to you, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so then, and then there was a gentleman sitting back there that throughout the meeting, he kept saying, think, making comments, right? Then it, it, it's, people become, because of the, because of the commotion going on, they start to do that. And the other thing is that they gasp when, when something else, it, they go, and like, it's, we're, we're creating an environment of, and what, what Counselor Dunstall brought up is that someone who's more timid, someone who is not, you know, going to get up and bark and say, I think this and that, and it's the way I believe, someone who's like on the minority especially. It's, we are creating an environment that, that is more difficult for someone like that to, to share. So we're talking about protecting people's freedoms, alright? And, and also, then, this is my last point, is that what are we, how much are we limiting people? By not, like, what are we really taking away from, that's like, oh, I went to this meeting, and I couldn't even clap, alright? People, people spoke and said things, and I was like sitting there on my hands going like, ah, I need to clap. It's like, these people that want to express, like, they, we're, we're not taking away from like their civil liberty to like express them. It's like, we're, we're in a, a town council chamber, and we're asking them not to behave that way. And the previous council did it, and it worked. Right, we, they didn't have that. It wasn't like they had to keep, we set a rule, we said no.
Counselor Cadwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I, I support this policy and procedure, I'll call it, that's being brought forward. I think it's, it's about time. I know, excuse me. As Counselor Sharp mentioned, this is a council chamber. It's not an arena. So that's not a very good example. That's just my own personal opinion on that. It is, it is, we set policies, we set procedures. We, we pass bylaws. It is somewhat of a court of laws, or, or a chamber of law, where laws are, are set and procedures and that. So I, I think, I, I, I'm glad we're looking at doing this. And how is it governed, or how is it taken care of? By the chair. That's how we did it in the past. You got a gavel, you hit it, you take control, you announce before the meeting. Out of respect to everybody, you know, this is how we're going to operate. So I, I feel that's the right thing to do. In the past, and it always irked me so much, there was always a gentleman, that always came into our council chambers wearing a hat. You know what? I'm sorry, my father brought me up. You walked in with something like that, you take your hat off. So again, that's another, that's just a bit of a sidebar example. But this is a, you know, this, this is a law court of law type of a chambers, and it has to be respected by everybody. Thank you.
Counselor Bothwell?
I would put forward a, a different motion than the one that's before us, which is just that we review our procedural bylaw with respect to other municipalities and come back with some, with the report on how they, how they include the definition of decorum and procedures. A simple, just a simple motion to something to that effect, that they come back with, with something like that. I always, at the beginning of all of my meetings that I chair, I do say that this meeting, we request that you respect everyone's opinion. I make a statement. I ask for decorum, I say no hissing, hollering, or hooting. I do put up with a little bit of clapping, but I immediately move on, and it does not become disruptive to the speaker. So I think we have, it's, it's not working that bad here, but I think when we look at it, I think we need to, I'd like to not, if I can put another motion for it, or I, I don't know, a friendly amendment, just that we review the procedural bylaw to look at the definition of decorum as it applies in other municipalities, and look at bringing forward something back.
How does, how does the mover, you feel okay?
Yeah, so we just... Absolutely.
How do you want to reword that?
Alright, let's, let's review.
What do you want to do with this, just to...
Well, I call that a friendly amendment. And we're going to look, look at other municipalities and their procedural bylaws when it comes to decorum in the, in the chambers.
Alright. Counselor Cadwell, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate this. At the, you're at the region, they have audiences. How does that, how is that taken care of? Can you comment on that for us, please?
Actually, we haven't had any audience. Not in any of the meetings I've been to, there hasn't been any audience making any comments. So it hasn't been an issue in this term of regional council. So it just hasn't... The chair has, has not had to call for decorum in any of my meetings, so. Counselor Sharp?
One other thing, that in our council chambers at these meetings, we don't allow food or drinks. That is part of our procedural bylaw. It is, we don't allow, we allow water, and that's it.
I think that might be outside the topic of this resolution.
No, no, it's not, Jeff. I'm talking about that we have, when we're in our council chamber, we, we make, you're, you're in a different place than...
I, I'd like to, to call a point of order.
No, is that...
So you're saying no?
Yes, I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is that we have a procedural bylaw.
Actually, I'd like to remove the counselor from the chambers for disobeying a point of order. So you're free to go.
I appeal.
Well, we need to have a vote on that. Who accepts the appeal? Counselor Sharp's appeal, he's ignored a point of order. I think it's valid, because he's completely off-topic.
Not off-topic, I'm talking about the procedural bylaw.
Counselor Sharp?
I'm talking about the procedural bylaw.
Are you appealing the point of order? Yeah, we can vote on it.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. I understand it happened earlier on, but there was no warning placed. I would like to see a warning given first, before removal.
I'm okay with that. Are you okay? So I won't kick you out. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Ritchie. Resolve that staff be directed to review our procedural bylaw in comparison to other municipalities and their process in respect to decorum. All in favor? That's carried. I have a notice of motion by Counselor Vane. Resolve that an idling control study be referred to the Grinsby Green Advisory Committee and staff for consideration. I acknowledge this notice of motion, and it will be discussed at our next regular council meeting. Moved by Counselor Frick, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw number twenty dash twenty to twenty dash twenty-two inclusive, and that same be read a first time. All in favor? That's carried. Moved by Counselor Frick, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaw twenty dash twenty to twenty dash twenty-two, read a first time, now be read a second and third time, and finally passed. The mayor and town clerk do sign and seal the same. Any rule of council to the contrary notwithstanding. All in favor? That's carried. Up next, is there any new business? Counselor Dunstall?
Does the town treasurer have a, a new number for us? Did we get a, or was I...
Alright, I think, I think he probably does. Steven?
Okay, so the total now town portion on the levy is, it went from sixteen point seven percent down to thirteen point three seven percent. The overall tax bill impact is three point seven four percent. And in terms of dollars on the average assessed home, we went from a hundred and seventy-two dollars on the town portion, down to a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ten cents. If you include the region in with that, the hundred and eighty dollars, the total annual is three hundred and seventeen dollars and ten cents. So the town's portion is somewhat lower than the regional portion.
Steven, can you just tell me again the percent of the town, thirteen point...
Thirteen point three seven.
Thank you.
Counselor Ritchie?
Sorry, I, I, thank you, Ms. Mayor, through you. I don't know if you'll have this or not. Do you know how much percent we've pushed off to the next year? With, with the commitments that we've made?
Not offhand, but we can easily calculate that.
Seeing no other new business, Counselor Cadwell, did you? Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Just want a couple of quick things, is the, the Kinsmen are having their mini putt this Sunday. I think there's room for one more team. I was speaking to Mr. Bruce Bond. And again, that's their major fundraiser for the hospital equipment and that. It starts around ten o'clock. They have a great dinner around five thirty-six, and check presentation. So looking forward to the event, so just for the public to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cadwell. I, I think I'll get a team together, so can you tell Bruce in the morning that, that we'll fill that last spot?
I have a team already in.
No, no. I'm, I'm going to fill that last spot, is what I'm talking about. Okay? Alright. Our, Counselor Ritchie?
I just want to say that the Green Rangers will be there, and watch out.
Alright. Alright. The next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, March twenty-third, twenty twenty at seven PM in the Town Hall of Council Chambers, and it's one week later to account for March break. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for staying here.